Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 27 hearing. This hearing is specifically for Stone Ridge, which is a continued hearing on its application, with the 272 application for the 40B apartment complex. We've been notified by them that they're still in discussions concerning certain aspects of the subdivision, therefore they've requested a continuance. Therefore, board members, we are looking at some of the dates. July 17 at 6:00 p.m., I believe. Everybody's schedule is okay with that? No vacations? If not, I need a motion to continue to July 17 at 6:00 p.m., and that'll be in the upper town hall.
So made.
Motion by Bobby. I have a second. Second by Charlie. All those in favor, opposed, unanimous? Let's do one quick housekeeping issue, and that is the minutes from the June 6 hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I will take a motion as they were presented. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. With that, we will be continuing on the upper deck of town hall for a public hearing at 7 o'clock on the third 40B Birch Street Place application. Therefore, a motion to adjourn this particular hearing. By Charlie, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor and opposed? Thank you for joining us in this short meeting. We'll see you at 7:00.
Okay. Going to open up this meeting at 7:00 for the 40B application for Birch Street Place. This is the continuing public meeting from our June 21 meeting. Before we get into the details of what we would like to talk about tonight, I'd like to, I think everybody has seen the minutes from last week, and I'd like to have a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion accepted. Okay. So let's, let me just give you a wrap-up where I think we are, okay? Last meeting, we went over the proposed project location, some topics discussed where the earth works, the rental pools, the rearrangement of the site, drop site, project by seven feet, grading issues, addition of a 10-foot-tall retaining wall, running water, culvert, drainage basin, intersection of Birch Street and Beaver Street, traffic report, off-site mitigation, and we also covered the storage issues and what you were going to do for that. Now, at that meeting, the applicant gave us a completed site, a completed copy of the plans, and our coordinator, Mr. Moody, passed those on to CEI. So I'd assume tonight that what we'll do is to review anything that has come out of CEI's report, any other subjects that you would like to cover, so that we can get to this point of having, hopefully, one more meeting and see if we can wrap this up, but we'll see how that goes tonight. So Jerry?
Let me interject as you mentioned, CEI, I just got this today from CEI. I didn't know, it came in late today, so I'll give these folks a copy. And this is bear further input, including some that they suggest as conditions for a possible grant. Again, this literally just in, I don't have a chance to make any very, very briefly, but it does mention rental pools and some of the other things that they find acceptable, some of the things that they suggest there should be conditions. All right? And as long as I'm passing stuff out, I don't think I sent these to you electronically.
No, you did not.
Alright, good. I sent them to your attorney yesterday.
Yep.
And this is, as usual, just the bare bones draft of a decision, first draft, very similar to the other ones, but also very different in the findings and in other aspects, but without a lot of special conditions. Those will come out of, if you develop things that you think need to be addressed specifically, also the, you know, some will come out of that, the various reports that we've received along. I'll be looking over those and trying to put together a list of what I think are conditions that you folks should give that input to me as we look at all, we can't do that now when you're all night to do that.
No, we're not, definitely not going to do that, but...
Those thoughts to me individually, I can then begin to incorporate that into a second draft.
Yeah, I think the thing that happened with the last meeting is we wanted CEI's input. Now you have it. So I don't expect you to respond to that this evening. If you want, I could paraphrase it, because we go through and quickly paraphrase and...
I had the chance just to briefly look through it. I think it's going to, it coordinates perfectly with the items Matt and I have been discussing offline out of these discussions. You had allowed us to talk direct to CEI and Matt, so nothing so far has jumped out at me as being dissimilar to what we've already discussed about the requirements that they had mentioned to us, which were mostly regarding environmental impacts. So all of the environmental impacts that we stated at the last hearing are going to remain the same. Nothing, based on these 14 items, will change the plans that you have today.
Okay. That's good information, yeah.
And obviously, the need to go to conservation, DEP, MIPA, and the U.S. EPA, those are all our next three or four stops, and all of those four stops will encompass everything that he has here.
And just for the benefit of the residents that showed up tonight, is there anything in there that would change some of the, anything that we discussed with them the last time? So that they're not surprised with anything?
Absolutely. The only one minor change, and it's nothing technical by any means in this 14-bullet list item, is that before the last meeting, I did not include the five landscape and lighting sheets in the set in front of Jerry.
Okay.
I just found that out while I was making copies for tonight's meeting. So just the landscape and lighting are put into these three sets, same date, I just forgot to print them for the last meeting, so.
So the set that I have doesn't have that?
Correct. You're missing five sheets.
These are here, yeah.
These do.
Okay.
So I want to give that to you tonight.
And then the other item is, we went through, we went through each and every one of Matt's CEI items in tabular form and just put a written response for the record, so that you have them, so I'll...
This was as a result of the last meeting that we had?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So we're basically just dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, as far as responding all of CEI's comments in writing, so that they're there for the record.
Melissa, you can put that up on the website.
Now, is there anything that you, as the applicant, would like to add to this meeting right now, based on what you've given us? Is there anything else you would like to present to us at this point? Okay, all right.
I think we're all set.
Board members, is there anything, any board member have any questions as to the information that we have? Any of the neighbors got any questions?
Well, we made the trip, so I think I should probably say a couple of things on behalf of some people who posed some questions.
Feel free. Disc up, there's a microphone here and right there, yeah?
I don't know how, you can probably hear it. It's okay.
That's all right.
Without the microphone, do I have to turn it on?
Well, it's mostly for the reason we got a microphone. It's different than upstairs, because we're on the Milford website.
It's on then, right?
Yeah, you're on. You're ready to go.
All right, well, first of all, what I want to do is, I just want to, on behalf of one of my neighbors at Birch Hill, my name is Roger Dolan, by the way, this is my wife, Terry. We reside at 10 Stalbrook at Birch Hill. We've been there for a couple of years, and one of our neighbors, who couldn't attend tonight, along with some others evidently, asked that I just clarify a few points, and then I'd like to make a statement about our general feeling about what's going on, what the impact is going to be. One of the questions that I, pardon me if this has already been addressed, but I'm trying to clarify it on behalf of some folks who don't quite understand the situation. The first question has to do with drainage, and to this point, there's been no impact whatsoever as far as at least the Stalbrook side of Birch Hill in terms of any basement leaks, drainage, or otherwise that I know of. There's some consideration as to what might happen as a result of this project. I know that there's been some discussion about routing and so forth, and people feel pretty confident that nothing like this is going to happen, but is there going to be any drainage that impacts Birch Hill? And if it does, is there assurance that it's not going to, that it will not have a negative effect?
Sure. Is this working as well?
Yeah, you can talk right there, yep.
Yeah, so to answer your question, sir, there will be no negative impact to the Birch Hill condominiums, simply based on topography. You folks are lower than our site based upon that stone wall that kind of separates the property, the property line itself. You folks kind of dipped down from that stone wall, and we're dipping down even at the initial submittal, but now we're dipping down another seven feet. So I did answer in writing to that one concern that CEI did raise, and that none of our stormwater is discharging towards your property. It's all internal to our site and towards the water away from the fire station, so there will be zero impact.
There's not.
Towards industrial drive, correct.
Okay, fine, thank you. The second point is one of the strongest points, and one that, to my knowledge, has not been really answered to any great satisfaction. And this has to do with the traffic study and the projection as to what's going to happen as a result of this project going forward. A lot of folks don't buy into this, and there's good reason for it. One of the examples that this gentleman cites that happened this week, and this has nothing to do with what might happen down the road with the additional folks who would be residing in the apartments, but the other morning, he was trying to exit from Stalbrook onto Birch Street, and there was a parade of 30 Amazon vans that went by going up to Industrial Road that had to pass before he was able to exit. Now, this is a safety concern, because when you take into consideration all of the people coming and going and how busy some of these businesses are, including Amazon up in that area, and you've got a fire station down a couple of blocks, and in conjunction with that, there was a question raised and a concern about having a stoplight. I think that's, of course, the fire station and the people, it's their responsibility to have it put in place, but that would be mandatory under the circumstances, where you have so much traffic coming and going and the prospect of additional traffic, not having a stoplight to allow the engines to go in and out with the close access of the people who would be up at Birch Street Place. And we're talking, in that particular case, perhaps as many as, you know, 300, 400 people and half as many cars. And how you can do that in addition to all of the other businesses that are projected up in that area where construction is ongoing? You take this all into consideration, and the traffic study indicated that just by putting a right-hand lane going onto Beaver from Birch will alleviate that, along with the light cycle being changed, and might have an impact of two additional cars at a stoplight? Who's buying that? I certainly don't. I can't imagine that with that many more vehicles. And there are more to come, as we know, because on Bear Hill, there's more and more development going on. And where are they going to travel? How are they going to travel? They're going to go up Birch Street. Right now, you've got this very dangerous bypass, a cutoff that incorporates Birch to Beaver to, what's the name of the street, Terry?
Central.
Central Street. And I have to admit, I've taken that as well to get around the, you know, the problem that people have in different times getting downtown and doing it in a timely manner. But the way that people drive in this residential area, which is very narrow and has a 25 mile an hour speed limit, today, I'll admit it, to get here on time, I took that road. And when I did, somebody came by me on a curve at 40 miles an hour on Central Street. And why this has continued, why people don't do something about it, you know, to be honest, it's a convenience, I agree, but something else has to be done in that respect, because someone's going to get hurt. There's no question about it. And with the influx of all of the additional people, how do you think they're going to be traveling to and from? Pretty much the same way. It's just a big issue. One thing just propagates another in this particular case. And, you know, I think that these folks, the developers, have certainly done their homework. You seem to be satisfied with a lot of the steps that they've taken, and they have, you know, answered a lot of these things. But we need some assurances. I don't know exactly, I know this is the zoning board of appeals, but who are the watchdogs for this project if it gets approved? Who makes sure that the things you say you're going to do get done? That's what these people want to know.
I can address that, yeah. Well, the zoning board is a primary watchdog, but in the day-to-day reality, the watchdogs are going to be the public safety officials involved. First and foremost, the building commissioner, who will supervise all the construction, the fire chief, who will supervise his aspects, and of course, he's fortunately right there, and the police department in terms of the traffic, backed up by consultants who we will continue to utilize, the zoning board will continue to utilize at applicant's expense to monitor this. That's why there have been suggestions in relation to traffic, to monitor these various locations and see how that works, and then adjustments can be made to improve as it goes along. So it's not going to be, once they approve the permit, there cannot be any other changes. There can be other changes that flow between the time they may approve these conceptual plans, and the final plans are approved, we'll say a year or so from now, the change is going to be in there based on that. And then, once the things are up and running, it's still going to be continued to be monitored, particularly as to traffic, to see where the problems are and where the changes that could be made. And they'll try to tie into the decision a responsibility on the applicant and then the developer to participate in that. So that'll all be worked in there, so it's a continuous process. I don't want to sound vague, but it really is, and there's going to be a lot of people monitoring this.
You know, I'm a retiree.
So am I.
Okay. I worked for 50 straight years.
Close.
I don't need an extracurricular job at this point, you know, watching over something. The whole idea of retirement is relaxation. That's what brought us to Birch Hill. We lived for 22 years in Northbridge. We sold our single-family home there, and we really liked Birch Hill for what it had to offer in 2016 when we moved. It's very convenient, it's quiet, everybody's respectful, and it looked very promising. But now it's gotten to a point where you say to yourself, you don't say any longer, "How good is it going to get?", you're saying, "How bad is it going to be?". This is not what I planned for in retirement. I planned for what Birch Hill was like in 2016, not what it's going to be like going forward. And I understand progress, I understand the need to do these things, but if any one of you folks was standing here in my shoes, you would feel exactly the same way, you would be disappointed, even to the point of perhaps considering to move. And I hope it doesn't get to that point, but this is what a lot of people are thinking. They don't really think that with the influx of so many people so close by is going to be livable for us, not for people like us. And some of the others that you've seen are also retired. It's just, like I said, it's a disappointing thing. Anything that can be done in conjunction with this, if the project goes forward, to keep this in mind for the neighborhood, the surrounding area, and that whole end of Milford, that whole east end of Milford, which is becoming congested, overpopulated, people aren't giving enough thought as to what the impact is going to be by putting all these places in the plaza where Stop &amp; Shop is, and how that's going to impact traffic with the restaurants that are going to go in there as well, and the additional people down in this neck of the woods.
I understand.
Is it going to be good for the town of Milford?
I understand. I live on Treadle Drive.
You live where?
Treadle Drive. If you go under 495 going towards Medway, it's your first left.
Okay.
So I come down, and I see another gentleman here from the Treadle Drive area, and we tried to get out of Treadle Drive with somebody coming 50 miles an hour from Medway trying to get on 495, which is about 100 yards from where we exit. So I understand that. I understand that. It's a tough subject. Traffic is...
You understand it from that standpoint, but I don't think any traffic study or anybody that's doing that kind of a review really understands it from our standpoint on Birch Street and what's happening there, the difficulty, the safety aspect of it. And in particular, you know, one of the things that augments that is the use of the Birch-Beaver Central shortcut. And that's what it is. It's a shortcut, and it's a very dangerous one. So we have to think that that's going to get worse unless you do the unthinkable, unthinkable, and that's make it passable to residents only, go through traffic on Central Street from that point where it goes up the hill all the way down to Beaver. I think the residents there would definitely appreciate it. How practical it would be and what the recourse would be downtown, I don't know, but then again, that's not my specialty. Anyway, I don't want to take too much time up here. That was one of the main concerns. The water situation, I think, is also a big question mark, from what I understand. There's a projection there, if all things fall into place with other developers who have similar projects in town contributing and investing to this, that Milford Water Company is going to do fine and will be able to supply all of this new development and the town with a surplus of water, which is almost unthinkable, from what I can tell. Last time I saw a lawn watered in this town, how long ago was that?
My neighborhood, the other day.
Huh?
In my neighborhood, just the other day.
Yeah, somebody who had a well, probably, right? Yeah, well, see, that's what I'm concerned about. In the event, for some reason, that something stalls or doesn't go forward with one of the other developers, where does that leave Milford Water Company?
Well, we're at this point in time, and I think Jerry will explain it, but the bottom line is, as you see, we got a big list of conditions. And one of the primary conditions, the elephant in the room in all these 40Bs, has been this. Unless the developer has an agreement with the water company that they can supply the water, and it's not going to be a detriment to the town of Milford, they can't even get a permit to put in, start a foundation. So that's the primary condition that we lay on.
Okay.
All right? So that's it.
Okay, well, that's good. Let's see if there's anything else that...
Yeah, go ahead, Mark. Yeah. We got in the traffic, the last couple of meetings we had with the developer, we discussed at length, this traffic. No matter what they put on paper, it's still on paper.
Exactly.
It's only a projection, but he's agreed, and it will be a stipulation that we put out there, that it's going to be a work in progress all the time. And there'll be adjustments made, there'll be adjustments made for morning traffic, there'll be adjustments made for seasonal traffic. And we know there's going to be issues. We know if we send X amount of cars as a projection up to Beaver Street, there's going to be issues up there. As far as 109 goes, that's in God's hand. 109, you just can't fix that. I mean, that's just a mess. We all know that's a mess. And with all the commerce that's down in that area, it's going to be constantly congested. But in your case, what you're talking about is trying to get in, get out. I have a question. We got in, you said you want to put a light somewhere. Where exactly, I'm a little confused on that.
There was mention made in one of the last meetings.
Right.
By the Milford Fire Department.
Okay.
About the installation of a light.
When they're leaving the station?
Exactly. You see that in front of a lot of fire stations. There isn't one right now.
Well, that's something that can be discussed. I don't know if that's...
That's not my responsibility, but I'm curious, I'm always curious about whether or not it could be done, because that's a huge safety issue.
Well, I'm not sure that's a developer's responsibility either. I think it's the town's responsibility to take a look at that, but it's just something we can address.
No, it's definitely the town's responsibility, but the whole idea of that being brought up is the fact that there is an understanding, there is going to be an influx of traffic here that wasn't there before to make this matter worse.
I would assume the chief tourie, who has been at these meetings, if his fire trucks cannot get out, he will be the first one to put an emergency light in front of his station. So I think that that's where that solution has got to come from.
Okay. Now, in conclusion here, and I've said enough, but I thank you for your patience.
You're doing fine.
You know, I understand that the driving factor here is affordable housing, let's face it. If that wasn't part of the picture, I don't know whether or not this project would be on the table. That's the reality of it. So I understand how that benefits the town of Milford. But over and above that, squeezing this place into that space amongst the industry and the neighborhoods that are there, how does this project, aside from the 40B compliance, how does this project benefit the citizens of Milford? That's what I want to know.
I can try. I can't really answer that. That's almost an unanswerable question.
Any development, any growth in any community is going to be viewed positively by those who want to be there and negatively by those who would rather it wasn't there. I mean, so it's somewhat of an unanswerable question, but you're right. Part of what drives this is Chapter 40B of the general laws, which puts every city or town that doesn't meet the right 10% of affordable housing is forced to utilize this statute, and developers have a right to come forward and almost a right to build, even though, like in this case, it's in an industrial area. To this developer's credit, he worked even before this process with other town boards and originally proposed 300 units in there. In working with these other town boards, with the planning board, with the town plan and the town engineer, and the selectmen, got that down from that original proposal of 300 units, which would have obviously had a much greater impact than the currently proposed, I think it's 172 or...
162.
162, okay, 162. So that's what's made this one a little more beneficial. Benefit to the town and any, you really can't think of it in terms of a benefit to the town on a development like this, any more than there was a benefit to the town when my house was built. You know, it's not something that really benefits a town, but it's something that the law says that every city or town has to take their share, their fair share of affordable housing. That's what brings this about, you know?
Understood. I mean, I'm talking from a personal standpoint right now.
Right, I understand.
And, you know, again, I have to say, you know, if any one of you gentlemen were, you know, in my position or in the shoes of the other folks at Birch Hill, you'd be pretty disappointed, and you'd probably put up a stand or you'd do something else more drastic and move if it got to be too imposing. That remains to be seen. We don't know. This is a big question mark. We can talk, you know, from the standpoint of all the plans and all the studies, and it does sound like it's been very thorough and complete and has followed through to that extent. It should be fine, but that doesn't necessarily control the factors of safety and traffic and water and some of the other unknowns. And that's what we're going to have to face down the road if this project goes forward. I just like everybody to really give that a second thought, you know, as you go to the next step, simple as that. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to be heard? Okay. Any last statements from our applicant?
No. I mean, I could answer some, I guess I could go into a little bit of some of the benefits of the town, but I don't think I'm...
Okay, all right. That's fine. Board members, we're all set? Okay. What I'd like to do is, first of all, entertain a motion to close this meeting and to schedule another public hearing. Now, the next public hearing, hopefully, with all the information that you've received, you know, that we've received from you, given that our coordinator, Mr. Moody, has put together all of the conditions, I'm hoping that we can come to that meeting and be pretty close to making, hopefully, a decision. Now, we have looked at the different times that would be available to have the next meeting, and it's getting very difficult with vacation. The board is getting burnt out, but one thing we looked at was, we have a 6:00 meeting on July 17 with Stone Ridge, and we were wondering, and we could piggyback your meeting at 7:00 on July 17.
I think that we can, but we did have the ZDA meeting in another town. I think it's the day after.
That's a point. The truth.
Yeah, he's right.
Charlie, when's our regular scheduled meeting?
12:00.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to...
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just before you make a motion, we don't have any additional plans to submit. I think everything's been submitted to you, so we feel comfortable that at least the public hearing process could close tonight.
Well, there's other things we have to do, so from your perspective, that may be right, but we're still working on conditions and such, and there may be a need for some input, so we wouldn't want to close it tonight.
Okay.
We could theoretically, in the next meeting, close it, look at the final, and could even make a decision that night, although it's likely there'll be one more night, but it really wouldn't be, since there's things that could still come in, it really wouldn't be appropriate to close it quite yet.
And the board would hopefully, and the board members who've worked diligently on all of these, would like to start concluding if, as like Jerry says, we have everything we need. Okay? So with that said, I would like to entertain a motion that we close this... on all of these would like to start concluding, if, as like Jerry says, we have everything we need.
Okay.
So with that said, I would like to entertain a motion that we close this public meeting, and we schedule another public follow-up meeting at 7 o'clock for Birch Street on July 17th, and I'd like to see a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by...
Second.
Second by Mark, so decided. Thanks, everyone, we appreciate your attention and your involvement.